So we're ready to go? Great.
Thank you, and I would like to announce the Thursday, April 16th, 2020, City Council Meeting. This meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, issued on March 17th, 2020, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. So to address the council, the City Council meeting will be exclusively a virtual meeting. The City Council agenda materials may be viewed online at www.brisbane.ca.org, at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Council members and staff will be videoconferencing. Staff, please mute your audio and use the raised hand icon for return to speak. As for members of the public, the City Council agenda materials may be viewed online. This meeting is being broadcast on Channel 27 and livestreamed on our YouTube channel, For remote public comments, the following email and text line will be monitored during the meeting, and public comments received will be read into the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2 or during an item. The email address to contact our city clerk is ipadilla@brisbaneca.org, or you can text her at 628-219-2922. And with that, I would like to call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance. So, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all." Roll call, please, and roll calls will, all voting will be done with an online individual roll call. So, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Mayor O'Connell?
Here. Thank you. With that, I would like a adoption of the agenda.
Adoption.
Adoption by, and a second by Councilmember Conway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we roll calling that?
Aye.
Yes. We will.
Member Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Member Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to Oral Communications, number one, and we have two slips for oral communications. The first is from Beth Grossman regarding the water main in the community garden.
So, this was written Monday, April 13th. Dear Arnold City Council Public Works, I understand that the water main in the community garden has a leak. We have been notified that it will not be repaired until after the shelter-in-place order is lifted. I would like to know if there's any possibility that it could be fixed in some temporary way so that we can continue gardening. Many of us have put considerable resources and time into planting our spring gardens. Our vegetables will not likely survive without regular watering. Many of the gardeners are seniors and are counting on our plots as a source of food and no way to avoid going to the store during this crisis. I'm hoping that you will see our garden as an essential service and find a way to fix the watering for the time being. Thank you for your service and consideration, Beth Grossman.
Thank you, and I do believe that staff is trying to address that on a temporary basis. And the second oral communication is from Chris Chance regarding the 101 Alamanee Project.
So, this was written April 15th, 2020, from Cheryl Chambers, Deputy District Director, External Affairs of Caltrans Bay Area, regarding US 101 deck replacement project at Alamanee Circle, San Francisco. Caltrans is pleased to announce that on Saturday, April 25th, we will begin construction on the US 101 deck replacement at San Francisco's Alamanee Circle. This is a priority project from Caltrans to replace 800 feet of bridge deck on one of the Bay Area's most heavily traveled corridors connecting the economic and population centers of the Peninsula and downtown San Francisco. Construction for the project originally scheduled to take place during the month of July 2020, but because of lower traffic volumes due to the statewide shelter-in-place order, Caltrans quickly and proactively reevaluated the US 101 Alamanee Project for the possibility of an advanced construction schedule. By performing this work in April, while peak travel demand has been reduced 40% to 60%, Caltrans will be able to complete this vital infrastructure project with less delay for drivers and minimize the need for local street traffic detours. With the support of local government agencies and elected officials, starting construction now during the shelter-in-place duration will take advantage of the reduced traffic conditions, minimize detour, and delay the public and community, and provide the opportunity to complete the deck replacement sooner to be ready to support the mobility and economic activities after the COVID-19 crisis. Under typical conditions, more than 240,000 vehicles travel the corridor daily. All work is in compliance with Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 33-20, classifying the transportation sector as essential critical infrastructure. Additional information about the construction can be found on our project website at www.101alamaneyproject.com. At all times, the health and safety of the public, Caltrans workers, and contractors deserve top priority as we prepare for construction. In addition to all standard safety requirements, Caltrans also continues to closely coordinate with and monitor information from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the California Department of Public Health, and others to ensure that we are following the best practices consistent with limiting the spread of COVID-19. We also recognize that the construction impacts of this project will be felt most acutely by the nearby residents and businesses. Our construction mitigation efforts to limit the effects of noise, light, and dust during the approximate two weeks of construction include removal of existing bridge deck by sawing away section by section, minimizing any jackhammering, and scheduling noisier demolition work during daytime hours. Questions or concerns about construction can be shared with Caltrans by email at info@101alamaneyproject.com and by phone at our project hotline number, 415-237-3827.
No. Terry, left hand, bottom of your screen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. At first, I couldn't because the host has to do that, and that was our city clerk. So, are there any other texts that you've received or communications?
No other communications.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent calendar, and I would like to remove Item C for some minor discussion. Do I have a motion to approve Item A, B, D, and E?
How about F, G?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we?
And F and G.
Are we doing F and G also?
Yes, I am so sorry.
Is that part of your motion, class?
It is.
Okay. Second. I'll second it.
Roll call for approval?
Can you just repeat that, please, Terry? It's a little unclear what we're removing now.
We're moving to approve Item A to adopt the City Council minutes of March 5th, Item B to accept the investment report of February 2020, Item D to authorize publication of the notice inviting bids for 2020 Slurry Seal Project, Item E to adopt Resolution 2020-22, adopting the 2021 Searl Slurry Seal of various city streets project, and Item F to adopt Resolution 2020-21 to authorize staff to submit a local early action planning, also known as LEAP grant application, and Item G to adopt Resolution 2020-09 approving the memorandum of understanding for the International Association of Firefighters Local 2400 AFL-CIL.
Thank you.
And with that, I had a motion from Councilmember Lentz and a second from Councilmember Conway. Roll calls, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Member Lentz?
Aye.
Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to Item C, to award the contract for the master planning of the Crocker Trail to RRM Design Group in the amount of $99,897. And can we have a staff report, please? Thank you, Noreen.
One second. Ingrid, do you have that in front of you that you can read? I don't have it up on my computer, I apologize.
The staff report?
Yes.
The purpose is to develop the city's trail system through the master planning process in order to protect environmentally sensitive areas, enhance connectivity, incorporate art, and provide additional opportunities for recreation. We are recommending to award the contract for the master planning of Crocker Trail to RRM Design Group in the amount of $99,897. In 2018-2019, Commissioner Fryer met with representatives from the Open Space and Ecology Committee to determine how proceeds from the sale of the 280 South Hill property were to be allocated. Direction from the city was such that funds spent would serve to benefit both open space ecology as well as Parks and Recreation. After said representatives convene, was decided that a portion of the funds, not to exceed $100,000, would be allocated towards the master planning of Crocker Trail. City Council affirmed their support for this project as part of the CIP review process. In January 2020, the city issued a formal request for proposals to prospective bidders. In total, eight proposals were received and deemed responsive to the RFP. A selection committee was formed to review the proposals and make a determination regarding the most qualified for the project. The selection committee was comprised of representatives from the Parks and Recreation Commission, Trails Subcommittee, the Open Space and Ecology Committee, and the Public Art Advisory Group. On February 20th, 2020, the selection committee met, reviewed all eight proposals, and engaged in a robust conversation regarding the applicants. Based on their rankings, the committee decided that in-person interviews with top prospects were not necessary and were unanimous in their recommendation of RRM Design Group for the project. On February 26th, 2020, the Parks and Recreation Commission affirmed the recommendation of the selection committee and made a motion to recommend that City Council award the bid to proceed. The fiscal impact and funding for the master planning will be allocated from the sale proceeds of the 280 South Hill property in the amount of $99,897.
Thank you, Ingrid. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Could we, Ingrid, are you able to read into, well, are there any questions from council for staff?
I have no question, but I saw that Dana Dilworth had submitted a letter, and I'm assuming that's where you're going, Madam Mayor.
I was going to have her letter read into the record.
Should I proceed with that? So, this letter was written on April 10th, 2020. Dear Councilmembers, staff, members of the public, this is regarding the consent calendar, Item C, master plan, Crocker Trail Park. First, I find this highly irregular that you would vote items on the agenda without the ability for the public to respond in real time after a presentation. The offer for remote public comment, Ingrid, is not equitable to the community if one does not subscribe to that level of internet or cell service. I appreciate a lot of work that has gone into preparation for this contract. However, many meetings are not accessible to people working 8 to 5 p.m., and there should be greater than one chance to hash out terms or goals of this contract. I was wondering what documents and environmental knowledge is in hand for this group to design the trail park. Do you have a hydrological study and spot soil testing along the existing trail for redundant contaminants from the former use as a rail? Do you know where to pond and increase habitat in the park to replace what was lost in the sale of the public land to Shenkey? While it looks like wetlands are in a conceptual plan along West Hill and where Linda Salmon saved the frog habitat near the town, there are more opportunities for habitat where the water is underground. We should take this opportunity to daylight the underground streams along the north side of the park. This very lifeless area without water. This would require more engineering or study than merely resurfacing that existing walkway. Perhaps you should include grant writing for assistance in daylighting Crocker Creek. Do you have a survey of native plants along the trail? There should be an upfront goal of all native plants in the future plans and perhaps a second location for San Bruno Mountain Nursery closer to Litman School. While RRM's credentials appear stunning, are they able to do a native plant survey? There used to be a standing Gary elliptica on the tracks near the Dolby Building. Last renovation of Crocker Park Trail, it was bulldozed down. Some sensitivity to the environment should be warranted in writing with bonding to secure a positive outcome. Will this plan have an adequate trail connection to the quarry and other open spaces on San Bruno Mountain? Productivity to San Bruno Mountain seems to be an omission in this end loop proposal. I would not approve an agreement with some guarantees that we get more than a paid part. Thank you, Dana Dilworth.
Thank you, Ingrid, and thank you, Dana, for your comments. I did want to say that I reached out to Dana Dilworth, and it is my understanding, and staff can correct me if I'm incorrect, that this grant is to do outreach and find out what the members of the public want to see in a trail and to do a lot of the research and focus groups that Dana is asking for. So, this isn't that it's a complete plan, it's to design a community-oriented plan. Is that correct? And any comments you can give, Noreen, that would be great.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's absolutely correct. This process will be to establish a master plan vision for the Crocker Park Trail and will incorporate multiple different platforms and community engagement opportunities for the public as well as previously identified stakeholder groups, including the Parks and Rec Commission, Open Space and Ecology Committee, the Public Art Advisory Group, Complete Streets, and several other key stakeholder groups within the community such as San Bruno Mountain Watch and the Brisbane School District. So, there'll be ample opportunity for all of those groups as well as our residents to participate in the process of visioning for the Crocker Park Trail.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'd like to see if any of the other council members have any questions or comments for staff and the public.
You answered my questions, Terry, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I just think the contractor that has been chosen is, just seems to be an excellent organization, and their examples that they've provided from work that they've done in the past seems to be top-notch, and I can see why the Open Space and Ecology Committee, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission, felt in a unanimous decision to move forward with this firm. And yeah, I'm super excited to see how they'll engage our community to create a really nice amenity for our city, so, thank you.
So, I wanted to be clear that I believe that it was a coalition between, so a subcommittee of Parks and Rec and Open Space that chose this person, not the entire commission, is that correct?
That is correct. It was a subcommittee comprised of the Trails Subcommittee from Parks and Recreation Commission as well as two Open Space and Ecology Committee members and one person from the Public Advisory Group.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, I would like to move forward. Do I have someone who would like to make the motion to approve Item C, the contract for the trial visioning?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Great, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway? Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. So, that brings us to Item H, the City Manners Report on Upcoming Activities.
Got just a couple of items for you tonight on the update. So, this is a information portal that the County of Samhitael has put together on COVID-19, and I think where most people are aware of it, or they're not actually aware of this one. This one actually was put together originally through the fire service, and then when this incident took place, it kind of got moved up in priority. It is a countywide mapping called Zone Haven, and it's going to show various critical services within each community. There'll be things such as open restaurants, social services, food distribution sites, if there are any, where lead law, fire, and law enforcement are, so people can go onto this site and throughout the 20 cities and the unincorporated Samhitael County, see these various things within each community.
Great, thank you.
The next one, just last night, we did have our second virtual town hall, and we will be doing another one next week. Last night, we had Dr. Sachin Gupta, who was able to answer a number of questions from members of the community. Dr. Gupta is a member of our community and resident of Brisbane, and it was great for him to offer his time and expertise. So, this is kind of a rotating, two council members. So this is kind of a rotating two council members a week. I think the first week, councilmembers Davis and Lance, and then last night, councilmember Cunningham and Lance. So if there are other council members who are interested in participating in this, just let me know, and we will get this scheduled going forward. These are on Wednesday evenings at 7:30, lasting roughly an hour. I think we went a little bit longer last night. And then they are replayed on Channel 27 and a bit on YouTube for people who want to look at it later. Jefferson Union High School District is seeking citizens to serve in its bond oversight committee. This is to review their bond expenditures, advise the public on whether proceeds have been used as promised, and join other district parents and members of tax association, senior citizens, businesspeople, and students. Good volunteer way to get involved. And then I believe this is the final one, the Light Up Your Star for Brisbane. This is in honor of healthcare heroes and healthcare heroes and first responders. This was a suggestion that was made by a Brisbane resident, and I think I'm starting to see some people partaking in it. So it's just a way to kind of recognize what's going on in our kind of special community way. That's all the items I have for this evening.
Great, thank you very much. And that brings us to Mayor and Council Matters, and the City and County Association of Governments, CKAG, representative is on our list. Do we have information on that? On item I?
Did you want me to respond?
Sure.
Okay, so, you know, with, so originally, I was going to step down as the city's representative and have Karen be Brisbane's rep, and I would be the alternate. With the oncoming of COVID-19, and, you know, looking to CKAG as a potential forum to have city council members talk about what they're doing in their cities, how they're working with volunteers, trying to, you know, share best practices. And since, you know, originally, I was on the county conference calls before Karen was, I had asked Karen if I could continue to serve until the crisis is over. She agreed. But since this is a role that the entire council has to approve, that's why it's on the agenda, and so, yeah, if I can just get the full council's support to be our rep until the crisis is over, that would be great.
I have no problem with that if... Councilmember Conway?
Yeah, the city attorney, I see Delilah here. Does that require a vote, or is that just something we can say, yeah, it's okay with me? Does that require a roll call vote? Because it's not really itemized in a sense, it's just something that is like an update. Does that require a roll call vote, or is that just something?
It was part of a vote earlier, Councilmember Conway, so we would like a recorded vote on the change.
Oh, okay, I see. All right. So that requires a motion, and I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll make a motion, okay.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you for being our representative.
No problem. Yeah, and just to let you know, at the last CKAG meeting, one of the items that I had asked to be put on the CKAG agenda was to actually have CKAG be a forum for the city council members, and it was passed unanimously to do that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize, I skipped over under City Managers' Report, one last item, a report from the city attorney on a legislative update.
Okay.
Given the discussion, I don't think, I think the only thing that would be new is the comments about sales tax, which are down at the bottom, or the city attorney, et cetera. The rest of it, I think, has already been, or thankfully, covered. I'm sorry, I thought he was reading it. Particularly to the city, there are three things going on in Sacramento, very, very briefly. The legislative leadership and the governor, due to the constitutionally required deadline of July 1 to adopt the budget, have agreed to adopt a bare bones budget by July 1, with the understanding that once we have actual tax revenues to report and to budget off of as of July 15, that the budget will be revisited at that time. By bare bones, that's still to be determined. Some people are calling it a skinny budget. There are all sorts of different phrases being used, but it basically means spend as little as possible to know what the revenues are coming in. The second thing that's going on in Sacramento is legislature has come back after a month-long recess, and it is not the full legislature. They just, excuse me, they just reconvened today through the committee process, and the, there's a special subcommittee of the Budget Committee in each house that was appointed late last week. The Senate hearing on COVID-19 today, was today, I'm sorry, and was still going on, actually, right until the meeting was called to order tonight. That meeting in Sacramento started, it was scheduled at 2, but it started, like, due to technology issues. The Assembly Subcommittee on COVID-19 is going to meet next Monday. The point of that is the next point, and that is that the governor, in taking steps to try to roll back financial burdens, has essentially forestalled the city's ability to collect and any state's ability to collect its share of sales tax, as well as some other funding. He did that in consultation with legislators, as we understand it, it was somewhat hurried. That has an inordinate impact across the entire state for all localities. The governor has said privately and publicly that he's going to address it. I asked Delilah to join us tonight, Delilah Clay, in place, she heard more detail today, she was monitoring the Subcommittee. But how he's going to address it remains open to discussion, both there's a move in Washington to have the federal government backfill, there's also a move at the state level to have the state simply de facto release the amount of money that would have been paid last year of the projected base. We can't assess whether either of those are realistic, they're being floated as trial balloons, but Delilah, was there more today by any chance?
Not much. I think today, they mostly focused on COVID-related response and recovery expenditures that the governor has been doing in the last month or so to exercise some legislative oversight over those decisions. There was some reference to the fact that local governments are going to be impacted by losses in revenues as well, while simultaneously having to provide greater services during the pendency of this emergency. So I do know that a number of organizations are very active right now, having conversations with the administration and legislators about the impacts to local government due to things like the deferment of sales tax, but also just the decrease in economic activity and how that's going to impact revenues for local governments themselves. So as Tom said, they're continuing to have conversations on that, but at this time, it's really unclear how the state is going to choose to address that. The governor's May revise is set to come out in mid-May, so there should be some additional details about local governments out there.
Thank you, Delilah. Something that we will need to look into as this unfolds and how we can adapt our budget as well. And thank you for that information.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask a question of either Tom or Delilah? And that is, yeah, thank you. So I got an email from a real estate management company informing me of a potential bill from Assemblymember Ting. It's AB 828, and it's a temporary moratorium on foreclosures and unlawful detainer actions in regards to COVID-19, but the bill also is proposing, in some instances, a reduced rent by 25%. Do you think that is likely to pass?
I'll just answer generally, and I'm going to hand that one to Delilah. There are a number of bills that have been announced publicly by assembly members, those technically are not totally in the process, unless they open the desk today. If bills are actually introduced, it's an important parliamentary distinction because of a variety of other things we won't go into. But when you announce a bill that you haven't introduced, it gives you time to play with it a bit before you actually put language in, that's why I raised it. Assemblymember Ting is one of many members, and, Delilah, if you could speak to the subject, who are bringing up moratoriums on all sorts of issues related to rent, evictions, and go on and on, well beyond the governor's orders. Go ahead, Delilah.
Yeah, so I won't speculate as to the chance of the bill to necessarily pass. There are a number of bills that members have introduced in response to COVID, in trying to fill what they see as gaps in some of the safety net protections that the governor has provided and that some local governments have provided. A fair amount of those, as Tom mentioned, have to do with evictions. Senator Weiner also introduced a bill to protect commercial tenants from eviction. So I think, you know, when the legislature does come back, so they're set to come back May 4, it's still unclear whether or not that date is aspirational. As it stands, that's their date, and so we'll see what happens. When they do come back, however, the leadership of both houses have sort of spoken to their membership about narrowing their priorities in legislation. In terms of the priorities that they've identified, COVID-related bills, so obviously, the bill that Mr. Ting introduced, the bills that Mr. Weiner has specific to COVID will be top of mind for sure for some of these members, but also issues related to homelessness, given the exacerbation of that problem by COVID, and as well wildfires. But there will still be other issues raised and taken up by the legislature outside of the bounds of that, and so there's still a lot to be seen as to how the members are going to proceed and how they're going to prioritize their issues. These bills on evictions will definitely be taken up and will be high priorities, but we'll just kind of have to see how members choose to make some decisions, and as Tom mentioned, how they may want to amend certain bills in response to some of the pushback and natural legislative debate and discussion.
As you know, with the housing crisis, a great deal emerges every time there is a crisis, and what's different this time, and I can still hold on on what Delilah just said, there's certain topics that have really had a lot of attention between now and the end of session on August 30. Other topics are probably going to go by the wayside. Commercial eviction, forestalling payments on mortgages, things like that, is one of those topics that's going to get a lot of attention.
Thank you very much for that report. That brings us to our countywide assignments and Subcommittee reports. Are there any council members that would like to report out on some of the virtual meetings?
I can just say that everything that I've been involved with, and there are four meetings that have been canceled, postponed, though I have nothing else to report out, but thank you.
I had a commute.org meeting this morning. Had pretty good attendance from everybody at 8:00 a.m. this morning. As you can imagine, the amount of people riding shuttles has drastically gone down. No one is carpooling, but, you know, the tone of the meeting was actually very, very positive. You know, one of the things that is happening is that a lot of people are working from home, and thus, that's reduced traffic, but also has reduced CO2 emissions and accidents on our roads. And so, you know, the hope is that through this, you know, this crisis that we're dealing with, that when we start to look at reentry into society and the workplace, that we, you know, also try and incorporate some of these silver linings, like being able to work from home and the, you know, the benefits that that can be. Of course, it wouldn't be, you know, commuting, you know, or saying, you know, working from home all the time, but, you know, once in a while, and hopefully that becomes part of the new normal, being able to work from home and being able to get some of those benefits. So, yeah, so that was like the main, the main topic item of the board members this morning.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis? Do you have any reports?
I don't have any reports. I did have a PCE meeting last month. Basically, they just kind of talked about, you know, what do we do when people aren't able to pay their bills and what support is available. That was just kind of right when all of this was going down, so it was a little bit in like the scramble phase of, you know, how do we, how do we manage what's happening in the world right now, and how do all these things impact people being able to pay? So it sounds like there are resources available, but I didn't, I don't have too much to report from that meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Conway, any report out?
Aye.
I'm sorry, you're a little time delay. What was that?
Did you hear me?
We can hear you, but...
I said I have no reports, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So that will bring us...
I'm on satellite.
Just a little time delay. So that brings us to written communications, and I don't see that we have, other than the ones mentioned in our Item C for the master planning, I don't see that we had any communications. Is that correct?
That's correct, no other communication from text. But we also do have an item regarding council meeting schedule that we need to discuss really quickly.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that on my agenda. Oh, I do see...
Before we go, can I just ask briefly, are there no public comments that have come in?
No public comments have come in.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so for the council agendas coming up, we are proposing to cancel the May 7th, so just going to a once-a-month meeting format at this point. We will have a abbreviated... We will have an abbreviated budget document for you to review on May 21st. And then we believe we can finish the business part of our agendas by the June 18th meeting. And then I think, given what we're going through, although we've canceled the July and August, we'll just kind of have to wait and see if there's a need during those months. But in terms of just the basic business of the city, we believe we can have that all finished by June.
Great, thank you.
And then as for the city council commission committee update, we did receive one additional application for the OSEC seat. And we were, wanted direction whether or not to schedule those interviews now or wait until the shelter in place order is no longer in place.
Well, it would be my wish to not subject people to interviews while we're in this shelter in place and probably not having very robust subcommittee meetings. But what would the rest of the council feel on that?
I agree, Mayor O'Connell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna agree with that too.
Thanks for me.
And I think that, right, I think that it would be nice if the city clerk reached out to the applicants and let them know that their application is, you know, still open and that we will schedule it just as soon as we can get back to a little bit of normalcy.
Will do, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And that brings us to oral communications number two.
None have been received.
Okay, and I see that most of these have been addressed. We did have written communication from Nicholas Lucar, Lucarel, regarding COVID-19. Jefferson Union High School on April 7th regarding school closure notices. From Charlotte Ballard on 410 regarding the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition Safe Street recommendations. From the Jefferson Union High School from, on April 10th regarding update to students and families. And the others we did mention earlier, in oral communications and in item C. I would like to say that I really appreciate all the hard work that staff and our council members and our members of the public and our committees and commissions have been doing during this pandemic. We've been getting a lot of information out on our website. And staff and all the essential workers are really going above and beyond to keep us together as a community, as are our members of the public. And I really appreciate that, I think it's important to show that solidarity and to appreciate our first responders and all our emergency personnel and the people that are delivering goods to our needs. And that our public is staying safe and, you know, abiding by the shelter in place orders and the other recommendations, so I really appreciate that. With that, I would like to ask for an adjournment and a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I have one correspondence from Prem Law that just got received.
Oh, okay, can you share that with us?
This is regarding the Baylands. The Baylands is a vast open space which can be used for a mix of solar arrays, wind turbines, and battery storage. Currently, Universal Paragon Corporation wants to place high density housing on this site near a former unregulated toxic zone. COVID-19 has shown us the folly of high density housing, which facilitates the spread of viral pandemics, whether of the coronavirus variety or otherwise. Such pandemics will increase frequency and intensity as both the United States and foreign nations destroy the natural habitats of wild animals. Those animals and the viruses they carry intermingle with humans more frequently. The California Public Utility Commission should broker a deal between PGME and Universal Paragon Corporation to turn the Brisbane Baylands into a sustainable energy resource for the SF Bay Area where solar and wind generated energy can be stored on site in large industrial strength batteries. For information, contact Elon Musk slash Tesla for the use of the San Francisco Bay Area residents and companies. Just a thought, Prem Law, Brisbane resident.
Thank you, Prem, for that comment. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
And a second? And then a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you very much.